Say for you, actually.
Yeah. Not sure, not sure I should.
No, I said we're fine with Chris.
Come on in, make yourself comfortable.
There is a agenda on the camera if you want.
No.
You're not threatening him, really?
Not.
All right, please stand for the potential. Why they should be invisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Roll call Jesse, Ruben, Aaron, Ben, Ben, here, Peterson, you're Bishop. Here. All right, thank you, we are called to order at seven P M. Draw your attention to the open meeting act posted on the south wall. And we conduct our business in accordance with that open meeting act. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with that open meeting act. Even though the closed session may not be on the agenda. Is the intention, the intention of the mayor and the council to take up items on the agenda in order to present it. However, we may reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate the schedule of members and persons who are on the agenda. Also, any person wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic. Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself and your address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak to. Review and action of the agenda. You to accept the agenda for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Kimberly moved Andrea second to accept the agenda for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, any discussion? Charity?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, January twenty third, twenty twenty four.
And we will set action on prior meeting minutes for January twenty third, complete twenty four and wait the reading.
Second. Charity moved Kimberly second that we accept the prior meeting minutes from January twenty third, twenty twenty four, any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote? Kimberly?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Great, I think I have an error in the minutes. So I have to prepare anyhow.
But you have been there later that she entered it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Just a minute.
Yeah, I, I.
But you let us know, you let us know.
In advance.
Okay. Andrea, yes.
I have to abstain.
Abstain, and Kimberly voted yes, Charity voted yes, and I vote yes, motion carried. And we are weaving those through. All right, communications, kind sir.
All right, so we're. I just wanted to let the council know, I know that we had some trouble comments. November, December timeframe, I feel like with Mr. Comettcher, we did find these cameras, those are ordered. A little bit more than I think we anticipated, but it's probably the best solution to that, so we'll have two cameras at the. Fairground sites and the rest, the roll off down there, and we'll have one camera at the hillside for the mail recycling trailer. Uh, the. The gentleman from Heartland Security, Mike was very easy to work with, understood our needs and wants and what we were kind of looking for. I know this will help the guys out. Now that we hopefully, he says you can identify. A fly on a horse's beak. He used other, he used other words, bats on the. So hopefully we're able to actually read the license plate and determine who the offender is and what the offense was and recreate some of that, but. What the guys have to spend time cleaning up a full furnace out of a trash can. So, no timeline yet, he'll get back to me, obviously, when stuff is in his possession before he gets to us and gets it installed. He did not think it would be a forever endeavor, but definitely some time to get everything ordered and put together and out here, so we're excited about working with Heartland Security. For that, we'll see how it goes with this, we still have our camera, as it all goes along with something. I just wanted to give you a quick update of that process. Couple of quick meetings coming up here, library board will meet tomorrow, Wednesday, the fourteenth, happy Valentine's Day. Five fifteen, Robin talked about chocolates even, I don't. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Library board meeting tomorrow, I don't know, bring your Valentines to the library for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Soon to not be around anymore.
We will be closed nineteenth and observance, President's Day. Tree board will meet Tuesday, the twentieth, the four P M. Pretty good agenda there, they're gonna have, want to talk about their goals, again, building their goal for twenty twenty, their goals for twenty twenty four. They're going to be quarters, January, February, March, April, May, June, September, October, November, December on the calendar year. They'll be talking about the preliminary plannings for Arbor Day, because that will be here before we know it. We've all started to get the warm weather itch, I think, so, not done with, no more crazy snowstorms between now and Easter.
Are they gonna do any, with the kid notes again?
Yes, absolutely, I think even though Chris has left that board. Those stuff up and still include the school, hopefully get Chrissy Landau, U N L Forester, to be a part of those activities, she did very good the year, she was able to make it with the kids and scout and do all that, so. They'll look forward to doing that with them, Jesse being attendance for that, that meeting with them, no. Nobody from the council or the mayor chose to go to the League of Midwestern Conference, however, Jesse is, is going to that, so she'll be able to pull. Full recap on that, and hopefully have a copy of the legislative report. When she comes back, that'll take us into March. I will be at Nebraska Planning and Zoning Administrator Planning and Zoning Conference Annual Meeting, the sixth, seventh, and eighth, March. Which will take us to our Nebraska Rural Water Annual Conference, one of the guys will be attending that more than likely. We'll try and separate, there's one in the fall and September, and then this is the mid, the annual conference. And that takes us to our next meeting, March twelfth, the next city council meeting, March twelfth, probably gonna try and sneak a C R A. At some point, but I will send that out, so Sam's aware of when that, so.
All right, perfect, thank you very much for that update. Standing committee reports, Andrea?
Cemetery Med at five fifteen, and they're working more on the baby later.
All right, perfect. Kimberly? Charity? Will Sam's look?
Just a quick update on our airport project as well, I was able to meet with our engineer, Jeff Wolf of MC Shaft. He gave me an update on the process and what they're looking at. For those of you who need a refresher, like making off the plate, we'll be updating the scan windows, doors. And insulation on the blue hanger at the airport, our F B O hanger. Fix space operator, which Ryan Fleming is currently, our, one of our F B Os up here. So the plan was to reskin it. But in inspection and the structural inspections, the skin is actually part of the structure. It's a different style that they did, he said, you know, many moons ago. No, no heart loss there, might actually save us some money, he said, by not having to remove and have a disposal. So what they're going to do is they're going to spray foam, for those of you who don't know, it's coordinated, it's got a weighty metal material. So they're gonna spray foam, spray foam the flat, then reskin over the spray foam and put a thermal barrier. The windows will be a little bit bigger, they'll be about a six inch window sill versus a three inch. And the door will be widened length of as far as it can go, to accommodate larger aircraft for Ryan in there. As well as all of the exterior doors will be replaced, improving the overall. Thermography of the building, we did. Ever seen F L I R, like break in temperature, something to see how hot or cold it is, like on the walls and stuff, so he showed me that, and we. We lose a lot of heat throwing out into that building, so this will be, this will be a good deal, and hopefully reducing that natural gas spill out there. Keeping that building heated in the winter, so, just wanted to give you a quick update on the airport there, don't have the bidding documents quite ready yet, but he's hoping to have, hoping to have those by the end of the month, so.
All right, we need to think out first.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. All right. We have the enforcement, sheriff, and water reports in our faculty. Everybody get a chance to, where do they go? Can you place that, that we can review those? Any questions? Financials, Jesse, there is backup for people that need. Perfect. Public comment?
Eric, I am thirty seven, Washington Avenue, I would just ask, from the council here, when you guys discuss review, the provision for revisions on the personnel manual, if you. Clear up your definitions on what you expect for lunches in our breaks, and maybe the pros and cons to. Why the changes? Because I just like to hear a little more discussion on, on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Any other public comments? All right.
Talk about that originally, or you already, I don't know.
If there's anything you would like to just proactively share now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, my teacher coach, our track team's doing a fundraiser, some of you have seen the work that we're selling, full size bikes and school garden. One thing, I guess, that kind of sparked this interest, I don't know, Eric's coach, have you been to Handicore for football coaching yet? That part kind of stemmed with me, was first time going there, coaching, and we pull into town, and there's any street sign for the school bikes, I mean, it's cool, I think. And there was some other places too, that was just personal, I could think of just about my, so we were talking about that, just seeing if that was something, you know, we're sitting on the, you know, checking in on some. With that, so, see if that was possible in some time, or use it up to raise money to do a couple of projects, one, we're getting a banner. Made from paper signs for the track measures, that'll say for the county bracket field on it. And then we have another project that we do. So, get some things we're kind of working towards with that.
Okay.
Just so, see if you're, so, so forth, so.
All right, great, and we do have it on the agenda tonight, so. And drummed up some information for us, so we'll be able to talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any, any other discussion? All right, discussion and review on the revisions to the city of grants personnel manual, I could call it a policy manual, because that's drummed in my head, I use policy all the time, and so. If I accidentally say policy, then I'm really meeting the. I know Sam is out, and I would like the full counsel before we make any decisions, I mean, we can go ahead and have a discussion, but I definitely want it on. Our next agenda, because just to have all of us here together. Because it is something that is, I feel very important, what you guys think.
I agree, yeah.
That's why it's just discussion, review, revision, or a resolution here.
I mean, we could go ahead and talk about it, but, but, please bring, you know, the discussion into our next time too, I guess, is what I, I just want to make sure that, you know, Stan has the chance to. Pull in all of our ideas together.
Yeah, for sure. So, I know, one question that I have, kind of reading through the revision part, is. Callback policy. Twenty six, page twenty six, chapter six. So it states if a non-on-call, actually, it states it in the previous paragraph as well, but instantly stating that they would pay. Get paid one and a half times their most current rate of pay for hours worked, provided they have recorded forty hours of regular time for that week. Thus, no on-call compensation would be awarded for that day or days, and then it states it again below the time and a half based on the forty hours recorded, I thought we had discussed if it is an actual. So I, I still get that we don't want to use vacation or sick to create a forty hour work week and then go into overtime, but for on-call. If they are called in after their shift, and they happen to have had vacation Monday of that week. It's, I still feel like it would be right to pay one and a half times for on-call, so I don't know if.
I, I agree.
Is just indicating something that we're not intending. I want to make sure if an employee is called in to work that they're paid one and a half times.
So not something that can wait for tomorrow, but something that has to be done.
Right.
So, I, I, you know, more of a, like, something urgent. I can't think of a scenario, sewer exploded, Eric could probably come up with a better scenario.
And I don't think probably it would happen most of the time, because if you're on-call, you're on-call for the week, right, but if, let's say, you end up being that employee that comes in.
One, the, the guy on-call is sick, and the second person has to come in for an emergency, but they were on vacation that week.
Yeah.
I agree, just for those particular instances, we wanted that person to be rewarded with time and a half, because we want that sewer fixed.
So didn't we put it more about the emergency, sort of the mayor approved that part?
So that was just approving.
We were, but you weren't, like, the regular hour that they come in to do their normal maintenance and stuff was not gonna get time and a half, so that's where. I think we needed to have it, so, is what I understood from you, and the type of thing like that you said. I mean, unless they, this other thing happened, and it happens, but it's time and a half.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we need to be paying time and a half for, like, stuff we know they have to, well, maintenance, we know you're going to have to do that.
Unless they get their forty.
Right, right, that's overtime, and then that, that would be an overtime pay, but yeah, I think, I, I mean, is, am I reading this right, is it?
I, I mean, I can word it another way, or, I mean, it just, just, just kind of guide me in the right direction, I mean, that's.
All right, I'm not sure how the verbiage would go, but basically, if.
I think we just removed, provided they have recorded forty hours of regular time worked for that week, I, I think that's.
So regardless if they have forty, if they get called back and they're not on-call, they're getting overtime pay for those hours, even if they only have thirty-five hours for them.
I think that was the intention, yeah.
Right, if, you know, if it is something that can't wait for the next day, it's, it's urgent, we want to reward that person for coming in.
So fully, we just need to have it, the callback policy is for all employees. Not the non-on-call employee, because we're gonna be called back in at that point.
Yeah, so I'll give you an instance, like, when there's a. Jesse isn't on the on-call schedule. Last year, when they were doing the water improvements, and then we had the break to do the notice.
Yeah.
I had to call Jesse in to do that notice.
Right.
Well, I didn't have to, but that's, as a city clerk, that's part of her responsibilities to create that notice.
Right.
So she wasn't on-call, but she got called back in that emergency circumstance, so I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the case, right, because if we, so we have someone on-call, that's fine, but if you're actually called out to do work. You should be paid time and a half, and if that involves two city employees, one who was never even on-call for the week, and they're coming out to work. If they haven't hit forty hours, it shouldn't really matter, if they're on, if they're coming in to work in a non. Shift timeframe, they should be.
Right, but not for.
And I think we were gonna put it as the time beyond our working hours, I think at one time, we were gonna have, like, but, you know, that it was. Our off-hours between seven and whatever, or six and two, or, yeah, it's a communal department, our local.
So, so let me get the first part right, so we're clear, so, just removing that, so if, if an employee. I just gave you that instance, that Jesse's not on the, all it's all scheduled.
Right.
Right.
Is called back to assist. On-call or non-call employee, they shall receive overtime at one and a half times their most current rate of pay for hours worked, striking, provided they have worked the forty hours.
Correct.
Correct, okay, let me get that far.
Because that doesn't happen very often.
Yep, and then we want to add, sorry, I missed that last part, it was striking, we wanted to add. What was the last thing you guys just said, Jesse?
Still the hours. The callback, it's not the, yeah, beyond our outside normal working hours.
Is, is that what I'm hearing from the council?
Yeah, and I think we actually, do we state that up top? Hour of work, generally eight hours, showing me get the workday.
I think we just need to have it repeated this down in that part, right?
Yeah, so just to make it clear that if, if the employee comes to work outside of working hours.
If an employee is called back outside the normal department hours to assist non-call. Is that the verbiage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or, I mean.
Yep.
Department order to, sorry, so.
No, I think, I think that's correct, we wanted to establish that the person on-call can. Ask another employee to take that shift if they're sick, or something like that, which we have accomplished. We just need to make sure we're indicating that they don't have to have worked and be over forty hours to get the time and a half for. Coming in on-call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, I think that's what we, I think even that.
Normally, they're gonna have forty hours, and those are gonna, should be extra anyway.
Yeah.
Yep.
Let me, let me just read it back then, so, this is the change that I would be making, if A, and I'm striking non-on-call, employee is called back outside, and I'm adding. Outside the normal department hours to assist.
Or I don't think it's really even assist, right?
Yeah.
I think we even, we're there some.
What else would you do?
I don't know, because, well, we're just being called back into work.
Is called back.
Because we're assisting.
Okay, outside the normal department hours, you know, striking assist. The on-call employee.
Yeah.
That employee shall receive overtime compensation at one and one-half times their most current rate of pay for hours worked.
Yeah, but I think it's, it becomes on-call compensation, do we have to define on-call compensation then elsewhere, because it's not overtime. And we probably need to, do we call out, you don't get overtime and on-call?
So, you could just receive overtime, Mary, and it's just compensation.
Yeah. Because you don't get pulled.
Right, it's one and a half times whether you're getting paid for overtime or you're paid for.
It just becomes compensation. So if, if a non-call, or sorry, if a, if an employee is called back outside the normal. Department hours, that employee shall receive compensation, striking overtime.
Yeah.
At one and one-half times their most current rate of pay for hours worked.
Yeah. And it is in the paragraph above there, in the last sentence, where it also does say, recorded forty hours of regular time worked, so, same change there.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it does at the start of that sentence say that they, if they are completing their mandatory wells, SCADA lift stations, roll-off inspections. They shall receive overtime compensation, do we stick with that, or are those kind of regular on-call activities, and the forty hours would apply there?
I, I think the forty hours, because that's part of the, the work week, so the, that, that should include. So like, if they need to make up. Scenarios. Right, they need to make it for a sick day, then they haven't reached their forty hours yet, they would reach their forty hours by the, the two hours of.
Yeah, nine times out of ten, that is their one hour. Of time for that.
Yeah.
That's.
That does not make it too complicated from a payroll perspective.
I, I mean, it's just, yeah, like, we said, I mean, basically doing what we're doing for the normal mandatory work, that must be included in the forty, because they still know what that standard is. And then anything over that then will be.
And it clears up some of the, the muddy ass.
Just reread that sentence, Ed, when you modify the forty hours of regular, because it talks about those regular duties. So if we strike the forty hours, that part's gonna get confusing.
And we know that they sometimes do go over, because that's the last thing they do, so.
Yeah.
I think we just need to word it like we kind of are, that they attempt to. Not have the overtime, and then vacation or sick day is still gonna be, we're gonna adjust for that.
Right. Bottom line is, if the sewer's backing up into my house, I would like them to be.
Absolutely, I would like them to be motivated to come to work.
That would be.
Motivated, serious.
Yeah.
See, it works great. And rewarded for that.
Yes. They should do. Okay. Good?
Yes. And then we'll have this conversation again, so Sam is, it's up to him. No, the agent is the. I skipped right past him. All right, thank you. So, so the, our current personnel manual does not. Define breaks or no breaks, so this is something I thought we needed, we needed standard verbiage in it. As most businesses define where a break is, define what a no break is, and so that was my idea on what we. And so that was my idea on what we needed to add to this, what about you guys?
Yeah, I think it makes sense as a regular occurrence that meals are meant to be a break in the day, breaks are meant to be. Helpful and avoiding injury and fatigue and accidents related to being tired, so. I think it's important that they're spaced out through the day, um. Just like any personnel manual, I think it's important that standards are set and expectations are understood on both sides of the house, but I think. Also, if there is a one-off or an occasion where. An employee would like to come in a half hour early. Not take their lunch until later in the day, because there's something going on and it's not a regular occurrence, then that makes sense. Like, we wanna be flexible, so I think. We just kind of pumping out a standard expectation for breaks and lunches and then allowing, obviously, the mayor superintendent to. Make exception.
Right, approve exceptions, okay. Yeah, a- and and that's what I was thinking too, I mean, it, there's all sorts of studies out there that show that. Taking breaks as breaks, you know, halfway through your day or morning and halfway through the afternoon, it does um. Keep employees. Safe, you know, especially if you're working out in the sun or working with equipment, but also um gives them time to do. Uh, send a personal email, to do, you know. Just shut down for the fifteen minutes, so I I think it's good that we define um. You know, have that in our manual like any other business would have.
Yeah. I do think it's important also, and I know the question came up, that, you know, perception is reality at times. So if the city expects to see its employees out and about and working during listed business hours. And the employees regularly are not, it it gets tough to explain that, um, just talking about our overtime or callback. Situation, if we expect employees to be here until two-thirty and every single day they're out at two, because we're saving a lunch or a break or whatever. How do we handle that? Is that a callback, or is that an extension of your regular work hours? It starts to get very buzzy, so I think.
Then then it's hard to justify overtime in that scenario, yes.
So I did wanna make a a a formal apology, I would state the last time I went over this without doing enough research. Bana helped help me on this, but Indiana does not, Nebraska Department of Labor does not require a thirty-minute break, it's only for three. Specific uh organize or uh industries, those being assembly, assembly plants, workshops. And manufacturing plants, I believe, um, so this, this would be. And I've just stated it so I can clarify the record, really, um, that this, this would be more stringent than Nebraska Department of Labor. Currently requires.
The two fifteens are required based on hours worked, that's a required.
But the thirty minutes is not only, except for those three industries, that's it. I just just want, I made that error at the last meeting, I didn't, I wanted to correct that error for me.
Okay.
I I I still think that it it's good to have a, that's our expectation, um. So that it's the same for all employees.
And I.
Well, and if it's, I guess if it's not. The hours of work are based on the fact that we assume a lunch, so if we're not going to require a lunch and that's open for discussion, I mean. Fine hearing both sides of that, but I think then we would need to look at, when do we physically need to have people working in the library, on the. You know, city. Maintenance, and does that mean we have different start and end times for different employees, so that we're covering a fair amount of hours? Which would be another, I guess, something to discuss.
Yeah, and I and I want to, I can speak for for Bill and Garrett, the the three that I'm directly in charge of and supervise. We, they, we do not have a productivity issue, but they work their straight eight and it's it's straight eight for the whole time. I mean, they take their fifteen-minute uh paid break when they can, but it it's a straight eight, I I have no issues with, I know I've spoken to all three of them. If I speak for you, I apologize, but uh they have no issues with not taking that lunch as well, so I just want to be. To be clear, as we're talking about this in the in the in the open, uh as their supervisors, I I I don't have an issue currently. I'm not saying there won't be an issue in the future, like Lisa stated, this is not just for the here and now, this is for. The the council and the employees for twenty years from now possibly, um, this is a living and breathing document, it should be. Looked at and and gone over every so often as HR policy, you know, with the state of Nebraska. And the legislature deems in their infinite list to change something that we have to make a change in here, but I I just, I I want you to know that I, as a supervisor. Have no issue with with no, with no lunch.
Well, the the thing is, Andrea and I and myself get from the community, they wanna see the public work seven to four, working, working seven to four. And so. I'm passing on what the public has told me, is all I'm doing.
Right, right.
And I have had more, more than a handful of people, but. Don't understand why they're at, and I have asked them to come talk to you, I've said, you know, you really need to go over and visit. With them, or even visit with the public work guys when you're out working, why they've chosen that. And discuss it with them instead of coming to me constantly, all the time, but they won't let up.
Right, right, so.
Have a conversation with anybody.
So this is kind of a, um, a compromise by the, if the public work being around. Working till two-thirty instead of one-thirty or two, I I mean, this is kind of a compromise on that part too. Plus, it is defining the lunches and the and the breaks, so.
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, cause you're on, it it is on the agenda, so.
I don't mean to interrupt, can I ask one? I totally get that you're getting constant uh. Asked or bugged about it, um. What, if it's defined, if you're defining it at that our working hours end at two-thirty. Um, but we're required to take a half an hour unpaid lunch, what difference does that make if we're taking it at two? Instead of ten-thirty, that that would be our midday, I mean, what? As far, I get that, okay, the truck's not out for that last half hour, but on a normal day anyway, that truck's not out, because we're in here filling out a time.
I don't think we, we have it defined in.
No, I I would just.
It's just been.
I just bet two-thirty, because then that would be eight hours from six to.
Yeah, so we have, we have just defined an eight-hour workday, we haven't defined a six-thirty to two to start time.
And that's why I was asking for it to be defined.
No, that.
To give a little more explanation on it, that's.
You did say that it can be taken in conjunction with the beginning work and the.
Right.
The shift.
The shift, I mean, the shift has been kind of an agreed upon by you as you see staffing needs, and so. The issue there then, I guess, becomes also, we don't actually have that documented anywhere. We're talking about overtime or callback, so if Ed feels that the city work is getting done by two-thirty. We are potentially paying a callback situation at three o'clock in the afternoon, which by any other business means would be totally outrageous.
Especially when the place is open until four.
The city office is open, the library is open until later in the day.
Five-thirty?
Yeah. Don't get me wrong, and it's a blizzard out, and it's, you know, six in the morning and everybody wants to have clear streets before they direct to work in school, it's very convenient. If you guys are out and about, if it's the summertime and you're mowing lawns and clearing streets and it's a hundred degrees in the afternoon, that makes sense to me as well, so I think. There's a lot of justification for when the hours have been what they are, but. If we continue to cut into the actual working day, I think we start to get really fuzzy about when is a callback actually happening? If you've already clocked out for the day. We are technically calling you back, but you're scheduled to still be here, so.
Shouldn't they call back just based on your eight hours worked? I mean, if you're coming back after eight hours. I can see where you're coming from, um, I also don't agree with the majority of you saying that. This is a normal business, this isn't it? For when you guys say, well, you need to take a break for your health and to get shady or. The fortunate part that we have is we get those breaks throughout the day when we're going from one department to another department. Like if we're mowing at the park and we get done, and then we gotta go mow at the ballfields. We get a break, because we come right through here, we can stop, we can get a drink, we can go to the restroom, and we're right when we're going again. The issue that myself and the and and Bill, that we discussed, um. Why do we need to stop working? On a job, come all the way back to the shop to take our break or a lunch, just to go back to finish the job, I I guess. We see it as we can get more done, we're okay with not taking a lunch, um, or our breaks. And just finding a five-minute break here and there throughout the day and getting our work done and going home. But that that would be my, that's how we feel about it. And we're not, we're not a normal business, because we don't work in an office, we're we're out somewhere for seven hours a day. We're very.
I mean, but that's why the labor law is in place on the fifteens, for sure, the lunch is is questionable, most people need to eat if they're working manual over for eight hours a day. So it's happening at some, at some point, somehow in the day. Food is likely being consumed and work is not being done, so it gets a lot easier for everyone if we designate that period as I'm not working and I am eating. Um, but then I think the other, and I and I guess what would be the the city employees' thoughts on. If we're trying to attempt coverage throughout the day for personnel on the clock. If we dropped to an eight-hour straight workday, we're not mandating a lunch, we are, of course, abided by the fifteen-minute break law. We s- we schedule shifts to kind of start stagger.
Are you?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
You're gonna lose employees.
The stagger shifts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Myself, I'm here because of the hours.
So rocking.
I like the hours.
Right, right.
It gives, it gives me time to do stuff in the afternoon to one, find another job to make more money for myself and my family and. Gives me the free time to do stuff I want to do, but I'm still working, I'm still doing my job every single day. So I, that's my opinion, it's.
I I just wanna reiterate, as our supervisor, that. We we have a very healthy schedule right now, and I I understand that. I wish they would come talk to me, I really do, I would love to explain to them the whole, the idea of this.
I wish they would come talk to you.
And in fact, it not only works in the winter, because of snow removal, it also works in summer, because of the heat.
Yeah, no, I.
They're done by, they're done by the high heat hours, you know, and and he's he's exactly right, you know, it it's a little bit of. I guess, freedom per se, as they're traveling to and from different departments to stop. And and get, you know, maybe they're picking up trash at pronto, and they run inside and get a slice of breakfast. And they're eating that breakfast pizza for five minutes while they're emptying the trash cans, you know, that type of stuff, so it's.
I I get all of that, but I guess that can also play out, like then if you're Jesse or somebody at the library where you have posted hours. She's very likely sitting at her desk typing and eating. So that is eating while transitioning to something else or doing some other kind of work and we're s- we're still. We need her here for eight and a half hours a day, so. So so we're trying to be fair to everybody, everybody, and you know, also like.
Say it's very helpful, the the six to two of the public works employees is is work very well.
Hours work.
Is there a way to 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 separate? The public works department from the libraries, from Jesse, from Ed, so that we're not in the same, because we can't be compared to each other.
I mean, I think we've already done that when it comes to like work hours and, you know, what we're doing in different departments, but I think when it comes to. Breaks and lunches, we need to standardize on our policies, I mean, because then we start to go back. FaceTime with the public for office hours or library hours, where that would be.
Well, we'll definitely talk about this again with Sam.
Good points.
Good point. But that additional half an hour will help a little bit with with the public concerns without adding. Seven, having you work for seven hours, so I think it's a good, I think it is a good compromise.
Darren, is there, before you close the topic, is there any way this could, like, before we move on? Is there any way that like we could work together, you say it's compromised, but we didn't really get a say. As to what compromise was.
Well, I feel like we have one offered solution from you, which is don't change it, and then we've made a couple of suggestions. We wanna move the time of the lunch more stagger the shift so that we have coverage during the day, but neither of us really have working for the city, so. I guess if you guys can come up with some other options that would allow us the coverage for an eight-hour shift for an employee, then.
We'll bring it on the turn of the year next time, so I'd bring the ideas.
This, you want an eight-hour shift covered between the times of not six and two, six and. Two-thirty, six, I mean, you say you want.
And I think, I think the public is happy if, so we have people here till four, but it's not. To your point, there are certain times of the year where it just doesn't necessarily make sense for us to push for that. Um, we can get a lot of productive stuff done before normal working hours, so. I think as far, as close to four that we can get would be helpful in having visibility. Um, and having faceTime with the public and being present and available when those services would be needed, but. Yeah, we're trying to try to have it needed, so bring it, bring it to the next meeting, we'll have the same discussion when Sam is here as well.
Bring it.
Bring your ideas and thoughts, you know. We're not doing anything today.
Right.
And if they, I mean, if you have thoughts or ideas, I guess you can submit them to Ed and.
And Ed, can you present our thoughts? Our thoughts before Ed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just give them time to think about it, I guess.
All right, anything?
Eric had a question, but we do have.
Yeah, if you have questions, please, we don't have to close the topic.
Do you have something to say, Robert, or no?
Um. Not necessarily, not when we get you.
But maybe it'll be on the next, the next invite.
And with the board meeting tomorrow night, because we may have some competition there. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, it's, you know, since we only have four library board meetings once a month, it might. Be wise to discuss this further with the library board, then come back in two weeks and. Have a more thorough discussion, so.
All right. Other city employees, Jesse, Ed, any questions?
You're here for months all the time, though, I mean.
I don't think, at least my reading of the people, they don't have to come back to the city office to extra sets of work.
No, they do not.
Like if you're out working or if, if that break happened there, it's not.
So if they're sitting at the ball field, working with the ball field, they can sit for fifteen minutes on the bench out there and take a break, it does not have to be. Done here in this building, is what you're saying.
Right, or the lunch, so those are the five, they have to be in there. That have to be done, it needs to be, it'll be for our time.
It doesn't.
Or can you, I mean, like as their director supervisor, is that something that?
It would have to be.
It would. I mean, would that make an impression? I don't know, I just, that was something you brought up about, you know, having to come back to the city office in order to.
That was more of a productivity person of having to leave and then come back, to even stop, even to stop to take a break. It it's it's just.
So if you could clock out where you were, would that, I mean, obviously, we're talking now minutes, probably, it's not like we live in a real big town, but.
Right, I mean, I mean, really, it's not gonna make that bigger for them.
No, it has nothing to do with the cotton and the cotton.
Okay, all right. Good job.
So I just wanted to clarify one other thing on the on-call policy, we're also on a stage, as far as the. Any amount of work of the twenty dollars per day. Policy being.
Yeah, that seems fair, we're making you stick around and.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I know we said we.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I know we said we talked about it again, so that was sort of a big change from the last. Meeting that was, that was important, so I, I wanted to give a bit more thoughts on that before we start grabbing your emotions to a business.
No, I'm, I'm good with that, yeah. Are we ready to? Think you're running for the candidate. Discuss. Probably make things. All right, Robin Quinn, action and discussion on annual library reports. If anyone would like a copy, I have some. Something I know you want.
Oh, sorry.
Just for the, because they are recording so that the audience in the digital world knows who I am.
I haven't been here, so I should start.
Yeah, and, and it hits up like everything.
Yes, okay. So, uh, my name is Robin Quinn, I'm the library director at Hastings Memorial Library here in downtown Brand. Um, and I am there to fulfill my yearly requirement. Um, of presenting the library's annual reports to, to the council and we're this on behalf of the library board. Uh, someone just asked me if I was gonna do the whole thing out loud, and I am not going to do that. Um, but you all have had, um.
A British place.
Did you fall asleep, is that?
No, no.
That's what I do standardly before I come to meetings.
Uh, I, in comparing this year's report to last year's report. Last year's report was kind of a look at all the fun shiny stuff we get to do. And this year's report is more of a, hey, here's the administrative kind of boring behind-the-scenes stuff that we do. That's not nearly as fun, but is still just as important. Uh, so when we went to look back over the past year, um, our. Focus areas kind of broke out into three main areas. Um, events and programming, which is always a big focus of the library. Uh, continuing education, um, and planning and policy. They're all very exciting things. Um, continuing education is something that is part of an accredited. Um, being an accredited library through the state of Nebraska with the library commission. Um, we are required to be certified librarians. Um, and the library director for our level, which I won't go into with this. Um, for our level, the library director is the only one that is required to be certified. But in the accreditation application, you get extra points for additional employees who are also certified. And plus, it is just, um, makes us better librarians to be able to complete continuing education. Um, and be able to apply that to our dogs. Um, so last year, um, the three of us combined completed a cumulative forty-two hours of credit. Um, we're required to do, I said forty-five every three years, which breaks down to about fifteen a year, so it is not so bad. Um, and a lot of these are done, um, virtually, there are a lot of webinars that are offered that we can do from. Um, the library, so we do not have to. Pay to travel like you used to in the past, traveling is still nice to do, to go and see people face to face, but. It's a lot. Um, and this year was especially important, um, because it was our reaccreditation year. Um, and that involves a lot of, um, a lot of planning. Um, the main requirements are, and, um. At our library board training last night, um, Cindy, um, Osborne kind of went into this a little bit. Um, but the community needs, um, plan, is basically a strategic plan. For what the community and what the library can do to help meet the needs of the community. And that is, um. The most important thing to do in accreditation, and it takes a very long time, you have to do a community profile on the history and the demographics of the community. Um, you have to do a survey of the community, asking about the community needs, which in April. Um, we did a huge survey, you probably saw lots of, um, flyers and social media posts and all the things for. Um, and that was also a part of this requirement, but also was a very helpful to get a lot of really good information. Out of that, it's helpful not only to the library, but I think a lot of other community organizations and groups. Would be interested in that information. Um, it was about a ninety-month process, we started talking about it at our library board meeting in January. And I, it was due October first, I turned it all in in late September. And we were re-accredited for five more years, um, at the gold level, which is the top level, um, for libraries in Nebraska. Um, which we should be really proud of as a community. Um, and not only is it. A state of the quality of library that we have, but we also get extra state aid for being at that level, so it's a little extra bonus. For money that we can't. Um, so that was the boring part. Um, the last kind of thing I want to focus on, which is the required part of this report, is the fun pictures on the back, the violence digital aid. Um, so if you flip to the back of your report, and you can see this is a by the numbers twenty twenty-three for the library. Um. And I think I've talked about this before, COVID. Was, okay, really hard on everybody, but really hard on the library, because it just changed kind of the way we all live and changed our patterns. And so we have spent the last couple of years since the pandemic kind of recovering from that. Um, this year, um, we got back up to eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty library visits per year. Uh, we get to that number by doing a two-week, um, counting of people who come in the door. In the winter, when it's typically our slowest time, and then another two-week period in the summer, when it's typically, typically our busiest time. And then we average those together, um, divide that out over the fifty-two weeks of the year, and that's how many visits that we get. Um, last year, um, there were twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight items borrowed from the library collection. Um, we answered over nine hundred and eighty-seven informational queries, which proves to you. That some people still use their librarians instead of using people. Um, last year, we presented fewer programs than we did in twenty twenty-two. But attendance, uh, the average attendance of those programs were higher. So last year we did a hundred and thirty-nine programs, this year we did a hundred and two, and, um, the attendance overall for all of those programs was one thousand three hundred. And ninety-seven people. Um, our library computers and the internet got used five hundred and thirty times last year. And that's a number that used to be really, really high, but as internet stopped being a computer at your house and in your hand. People don't need to use it as much, but we are still the only, um, really public internet access. Um, wired internet access in the community, which is, um, important. Um. So our library card holder count is at one thousand five hundred and seventy-five. And that is actually, um, really good, because we go through, just in case people think, well. Tom Smith died five years ago and he still has a library card. No, we go through, um, and people who have moved away or have passed away. Um, we go through and delete their accounts, and sometimes if they haven't come and picked up their physical library card. And we still have it, then we can reuse that card over again, which also saves us from having to order physical library cards. Um, we have only ordered them once. Um, since I've been here for less than a year, so that's great, that's a pretty good, uh, average. Um, if you look down at the bottom, there's some cute little kids. Um, and it talks about our summer reading program, which is always our largest and most popular program offering. Um, we have, um, programming activities part where kids come and we do storytimes, um, and activities. And that is separate from the reading program. Um, the total attendance at the programming part. Was three hundred and thirty-one attendees over the four weeks of programs that we had. Um, the reading challenge, we had sixty individual kids participate. And they can participate in that program for eight weeks in the summer, so it goes from June through the end of August. Um, and they read, we kept track of minutes only this year, and they read forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five minutes. We can go back later. Um, and then the other thing I want to point out really quickly, um, is the popularity of, um, our Libby app. Um, Libby is an app that the library provides for free, um, through the Nebraska Overdrive Consortium. Um, we pay a small fee and about two hundred libraries across the state share the cost, and we're providing that service to the state. Um, and through that, they have access to over sixty-three thousand e-books, audio books, and digital magazines. Um, and over the last year, um, out of our fifteen hundred-ish patrons. Five hundred and seventy-three of them are signed up for the overdrive service, and they checked out thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight items. Just digitally through Libby last year. So it is a really important, um, service that we can provide, and it saves people lots of money from buying, from.
Other places, services that shall not be named.
Yeah. Um, so the other thing that I did, and you don't have to go over this, but, um, if you notice, I did some five-year statistical comparisons on the main. Um, stats that we kind of turn on every year, um, and it is interesting because on most of them, you can see up, up. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, up, and then, yeah. And I just wanted to point out again that the reason for that is, well, we blame the evidence behind it, how rightfully so. Um, the pair, so, um, that is all I'm gonna say, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to take them right now.
Not necessarily a question, but I did want to make a point that, um, Robin doesn't know this yet. But we are, it's part of our, part of our parking rec. We, the parking rec put out a community sort of needs specific to the parking rec, and they, they asked if they could. View the, the library's community needs. Um, packet that you put together in conjunction with what they see the vision for parking rec, so we're gonna be hopefully meshing those two. In, in a future conversation, um, as well as, we're also looking at the same similar system for the barcode. Um, scanner for the library's cards for the pool. For checking in and out, um, could be a little bit more, do they actually have a pool pass?
Or do they just say?
Or they just say they have. So, so we got, we stole that idea from you, and as well as the school, the school uses a badge system to, to enter, exit the building. RFID, we're not gonna use that technology, but the barcode scanner is a cheaper option, it's still pretty expensive.
We can't tattoo it on them, or too much, too much.
She didn't, she didn't mean that. Mark of the beast is not that mean.
And we, they're gonna lose cards.
So, thank you for that, thank you for the community need profile, but we will be including that in future conversation in the parking rec awards.
And.
Can we wrap up that, it's their.
Give me, goodbye your class.
And either, either Val or myself would be happy to come to a parking rec meeting and kind of go through that with them too, so.
We will, we're trying to do a deep, deep community.
Yeah.
They did a lot of legwork, we're just, we're kind of narrow focused on parking rec, but there are some things that came about, we're computing and profiling. Tunnel into parking rec sort of activity, so a different comment, that was a hard question.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions? You got, you got.
I think I asked last year, I think the ESL class was amazing, can we have? Spanish class for.
Why one?
I would love.
For adults?
Yeah.
That, you are not the only one that can do that, so, yeah, we would need to try and find a facilitator who wants to teach, um.
Slow.
Yes.
I'm just saying, adults learning a second language, when they never learn a second language.
Yeah, it's all from a language reversal.
He's like.
I'll work on that. I'm sure I'll go on it, but. All right, very, thank you.
I move to accept the annual library report second.
Andrew, move, Terry, second, that we accept the annual library report, I can reach. Any more discussion? How do you vote?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Yes. All right, motion carried.
Free speech.
All right, action in this session on narrow appointments.
Are you sure, are you positive?
Don't, don't, don't.
Of Carol Cornelius. And her term is through twenty twenty-eight.
I move to accept Carol Cornelius as a narrow appointment to the library board, second.
Andrew, move, Kimberly, second, that we accept, um, Carol Cornelius as a narrow appointment to the library board, any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes.
Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Motion carried, it is official. Yeah.
As of that vote, you are on the board tomorrow.
Okay, but she still gets her EU credits, right?
You get your credit from last year. Just wanted to make sure you do.
You wanna move that by?
Yeah, so can I make a motion to move agenda item E up to now, just so I know we have some votes, they want to discuss it, or do you think?
We need a bunch of. Okay, so, um, Kimberly, move to move agenda item E to now, uh, Andrew, a second, that motion, you just got. Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, we are now at action on in discussion on availability of the Italian utility from. Her private flag this way, so, um, we have this put on the agenda and, um, and thankfully got some information for us, or Jesse, thank you, Jesse.
I, I did, um, I, I need to apologize to Shane Hyde as well. Uh, he had talked to me about the school doing their, the track and field doing their deal and, and. Maybe said no out of context, I just, in that no, I meant no, we haven't done the research.
Oh, it's.
And, 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 uh, Kim and I talked last night, very third of the conversation. Um, and Jesse, Jesse does this every year for us for the banner policy that we, that allows us to fly the American flag. Um, our polls are set up already, there's a flag holder attachment in twenty-eight of them, twenty-nine of them, something along, there's a lot of flags. Um, so that part of it is there, what I sent to you guys was what I, I did on some research, so that, red and flag is already set up. Um, for us to do this going forward, or organization to do this going forward, they would really need to have their own flag, the poles. And whatever flag they're going to display, uh, but there's some more rules in the, in that banner policy that we have to adhere to since we are on state highway.
Yeah, who knew?
Um.
Thank you. I did read that.
So.
So then they have to provide a warning. Thirty days, right? Advanced notice is what I read.
Was that in the?
I think unless it provides like an immediate.
I knew in the one spot where I signed the application, I can get them, they can just take it down, I may not have read it.
I think we get a thirty-day notification to remove it if it.
Can reduce to the. Odds are it's not.
I have, I have.
Yeah, they could do that.
I have been to the other communities, I think Shane mentioned Hemingford Sterling, Colorado was another one that. Maxwell had done it last year, um, more recently, Bayer did it for boys districts. Um, boys wrestling districts. Um, so I did reach out to a few communities to see how they've done it, they did it through private groups, it was a. Public County Community Foundation, or, you know, their local foundation to, uh, apply for grant money to buy the poles and flags, et cetera. Um, and then I not really got any response back on how they man, how they're managed, or how they're put up and taken down, whether that's by. The respective organization, i.e. the school, or. Other, other work.
They can't be.
Yes.
It would have to be public works.
Yeah, just for insurance liability is what I'm thinking would have to be.
Well, it actually states in there.
It does say.
Well, it actually states in here that they either have to supervise or they have to physically do it. And if it is somebody else doing it, like they need to be trained to do it, so.
It'd be trained to pull into a flag holder attachment. Eric, would you give that?
We will.
He will stand near the ground, so there's a school.
So, so, no, you're doing it on a ladder in the back of a truck, which is OSHA-approved. The truck is.
Speeding as we.
We're, we don't fall under OSHA, so I don't have to worry about that. Um, we're governmental organizations.
All that to say though, I had no idea Jesse applied for us to even be able to fly our, our American flag. So thank you very much for doing that. So we can be patriotic and Christian. And those are the only things that can be eliminated from your light pole, flag pole things, by the way.
So, so there's like a rule for every?
There's a lot of things which actually I think is good because obviously I think when you're considering representing any entity outside of the entity that owns that pole, I think there's concerns about who do you open up to? Who do you not, whatever? Um, I had, had somebody ask me or talk to me about like, what if we had senior pictures on banners? You cannot have people identifying people faces on your, so that's a no. Kind of would have been cool, I think, but.
We did that one.
We did it once.
We did it illegally.
Not supposed to do that. We're not supposed to do that. So, I mean, it's good to know there's lots of rules. Um, I also had no idea that really just for efficiency and preservation of the flags that we do have, they're actually physically attached to the flag poles that we have, so we can't we can't use the same pole.
Right.
I totally didn't know that, so I'm putting.
They're swivel, so they, they, it's a, it's a whole setup.
When it's in the, they wrap them.
It doesn't always work, but sometimes it does. But in, in, I think the most important part, and not, not to disregard any of the actual banner policy.
Yeah.
I really think that the three points in the actual this per, this purpose or the comprehensive and the banner application, they the three bullet points on the purpose of the application, you know, to announce plans for upcoming events, to promote community pride and spirit, to serve as a non-message declaration. Those are the sort of three key takeaways for me and, and whether we're, we or the school is, is providing and, and we put them up um or another organization, the Chamber, the Rotary, the Lions, whoever, I think that falls under community pride and spirit. I mean, you're, you're obviously, you're taking pride in something and would definitely meet those guidelines. It's just how, the logistics.
Yeah.
Is, is coordination or how do we, how, how do we pay for it or how does it get paid for? And logistically, how do they go up? How do they come down? When do they go up and when do they come out? Is it just for big events like a district meet or? I mean, they're gonna come up, up and down for every home game. It's not logistically a good.
No.
And that would.
Or, or every home game event or.
Right.
So I, I really like that, those three bullet points on that application.
And, and so if, if we do do like during playoffs, do we have to include that out on our permit that we're gonna pull on? No, okay, so this.
That we go on our own policy.
Right.
So that we have it requirements of, so that it doesn't wind up that maybe it's up, it's not just the American flag for.
Right.
Whatever you're wanting to try to.
I think it's a wonderful idea. That would be so fun.
Yeah, you know, for districts or.
Well, and specifically only because Shane was here, the track doesn't get very many polling. They're, they're not getting four to six home football games. You know, they're getting two, they're getting two. Uh, yeah. Maybe they're gonna. Definitely. Maybe we won't have to go to Oklahoma for districts.
You may not be shoveling our tracks so that we can have a snowing.
But, but, so I, I don't know if that's something we want to go into further and, and have a, a, our own comprehensive banner um uh policy um where we can discuss what, when is, if those are doors we're wanting to open for community pride and spirit, um or non-message decoration. Maybe the Chamber wants to purchase ten flags and just alternate blocks.
Right.
You know, or something like that, or they want to put them up there in the uh drive-in movie theater.
Yeah.
So our message is just to PC Chamber on it, so. Or for Perkins County Community Foundation.
Or for the fair.
Fair. So.
For the city of Grant.
Or just city, yeah.
Yeah, go Grant.
Let's have a follow-up, brother.
Yeah, right, the R ones, yeah. Yep. Well, so I think what you need is direction from us.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready. If you want me to start working on a policy, that's something here.
Yep, do you need a motion for that?
I would appreciate it, though. I mean, you've given me guidance. I don't really need one. Like, it's up to you, etc. If you want to, you want to have a motion stating that you're directing me to create a banner policy for the city of Grant uh in the dawn, etc., what I just said.
Yes. I will make a motion that Ed should begin work on a banner policy for the city of Grant.
Second. Kimberly, move. Andrew, second that Edward works on a banner policy for the city of Grant. Any more discussion? Ideas, please um send to Edward. All right, no more discussion. Andrew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Teri?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, sorry, just real quick, this discussion, your motion carried, thank you. Um, uh Jesse's gonna also reach out to the omitters um as to whether or not we can use public funds for any of those purchases.
So I think after I thought about it more, we could potentially, they could apply for keynote.
But we need to cross our Ts and down our R's.
I don't know.
We do not want to be a trauma.
No.
The, the keynote we can definitely use for that type of project potentially, um, it's more of the we did know that we would, you know, possibly have other issues, especially if it's like the school and us or something like that, but.
They're both tested.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and that we can't purchase flags for, write it and stuff like that. We already know, so.
Right, so like DJs or pronto, we can't purchase flags for them.
We have roughly, just a reminder of keynote then, there's roughly seventeen thousand and change in there. And we have an application actually for the next meeting. Uh, Jesse will have an exact number here in two seconds.
Eighteen, nine, twenty.
Eighteen, nine, twenty. Uh, and we no longer have a keynote provider, so those funds aren't no longer being replenished, but we need to use them somehow, some way, somewhere. Um, and if, if the school or Shane would like to grab an application, Jesse's got everything required for keynote application. Keynote funds application.
So based on Edward's numbers, just for purchase of flags and poles, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five or sixty.
The, the poles are roughly twenty, twenty-eight dollars a piece. And I just exaggerate with, with flags uh based on the one where we're purchasing them from. US flags are not as expensive as like a state flag. I don't, don't ask me why.
Well, these are the.
Yeah, yes. And I use them.
Those are the numbers that I worked with the sixty. We also, if we decide to do something like this, we have twenty-eight flag poles. We don't need twenty-eight flags.
Right.
Necessarily, we could do fourteen flags. We can do, I mean, whatever.
Or every third or every.
How long is the track and field fundraiser thing going on? How long a year?
Go into tracks. I'll give it to the kids when we start here in twenty-six. And it's, and we made these, I made it potentially with just our PC logo. There's no specific sport activity on them. There's red, black, there's a white. They just have that PC logo on them. Um, get burger making, of course. We were helping for, then crafty traps, whatever. Support that business. And then if we do this, like I said, we'll, we'll use paper science too. Um, I have done a community foundation forum too for show. And the next will be another forum. Actually.
It'll be then another quarter, so you can kind of see how things go and.
Right, and the applicant, it'll, it'll be another quarter before they, we the next keynote runs out of these, etc. Yeah.
Well, that's so exciting. Thank you for researching and bringing this to the council and thank you for the dice. All right, I'll be back to.
You're welcome to stay for the fun if you want. You sure don't have to.
If that doesn't mean I'm gonna run the room.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
I know.
It's fine. Um, I would really like to um table this to the twenty-seventh, cause I'd like a full council to talk about the piece of if you guys don't mind.
It's fine. And I, I only put an action in case there's any action that you wanted to take. Obviously, I'm not, not asking anything this evening. Um, can I just, I just make really two kind of quick, kind of quick quotes of men here? So if you look at the, the terms, in fact, the new one just came out today, which I did in Frankincense, it was Friday. Uh, but the new cost of living just came out today. It did drop point two, so it's down to three, uh, three percent overall. Uh, which is actually down two from the previous quarter. Uh, these are released on quarter basis. Um, so we, we are.
I was just gonna say, where is it going down at?
Place higher, the areas.
Overall, overall, sorry.
Did you see that?
Change.
Did you check?
I did that.
Look, look.
I don't feel that, Stacey.
We don't believe you.
No, we don't.
I can make up these numbers if you, I'm, I don't think you want to start.
Someone is, I was gonna say. I'm just kidding. I'm not, I'm just.
Point four over the last two quarters, the overall number, the three point two at the top has come down. So it's now even three percent from the year, from December of twenty twenty-two. Um, and this one would have been from February of twenty twenty-two, that just came out today. Um, really, that's all that's really noteworthy on there. Obviously, you all shop and, and take care of business on a regular basis and know that nothing has gone down. In fact, if not, if you find at the grocery store, it hasn't tripled um from there. And the other thing was uh the comparable community average. There is roughly five current employees that are below the comparable community average. And I would like to have a, another conversation about that at the next meeting. Um, as well as some potential changes. I started visiting with a couple of other communities that are um similar in size to us as far as employees go, and they're looking at making some moves to department heads uh versus one head over everything, uh splitting the departments between two or three employees evenly. Uh, so there's uh responsibility, accountability, uh as well as it, it, it just, I, I think the way, way it was presented, not accurately presenting it to you. Uh, but I think there's a case there for, for maybe even us to look at moving to a department head system. Not saying we need a department head and then employee, but we're, we're putting employees in charge of departments. Um, to spread out some of the responsibility, so it's not all on one person's shoulder. There is a lot. We have eight, nine, ten, ten departments. Um, we're not always working in all those tens. CRA, we, we may only mow the CRA properties over the summer, and that's what we're doing in those departments, but um, it's something to think about. I just wanted to make those two points. You know, we're, we're, we're below average of, of at least five employees right now. I know that was something that Sam specifically wanted to talk about sooner than later.
Right.
Um, as well as library. Um, and I did provide the library with their comparable community averages, like Robin said, when she's and they were excellent, they did already have this information. So I've shared that with them as well. And I'm more than happy to table it. Obviously, we're not ready. Uh, I, I would be looking, we're gonna make an adjustment. I would be looking at that April one timeframe. Uh, that's the six month. The, the mid-year.
Right.
So there, there's my points of emphasis.
Do we need a motion or?
Just the table as you're gonna do.
Yeah.
Make a motion to table action discussion on. Right, let's see. Yeah. The Nebraska, Nebraska pays survey results to the next day council meeting to twenty-seven, twenty-four.
Second. Teri, move. Andrew, uh, second that we table the pay survey, survey to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and more of a session. Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Teri?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Thank you, Teri. Very much. All right, Jesse, would you please read ordinance twenty-four oh two?
Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero two dash zero one, an ordinance authorizing and directing execution of amended and restated total power requirements. Power purchase agreement by the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska, with the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska to acknowledge and provide for the limitations on use of electricity to prescribe the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
And just uh, this is obviously the first reading. We have three readings of this. Just a quick reminder, this is kind of what Carol talked about when she came. This is our, uh, we are a service schedule M, is what we are called. We're a full, total power requirements power purchaser uh for me for our electricity. Uh, and this is a change that we talked about that we're coming with that agreement. Um, and really the big changes are giving communities the option every five years if they would like to do so, uh, to go out on the market.
So you're crazy.
Uh, and I, yes, I don't disagree with you. Uh, the options are not great. Um, we're, we're actually in a really good place right now with me and, and our electric supplier. Um, so first reading here, I know this is a lot for, we sat in on some webinars and then the reading and everything else, so I don't know if you had anything you wanted to.
Anything that popped out at you?
I mean, they say every five years you can get out of it, but there's a lot. I'm afraid, so. I mean, I'll probably kind of break that down the next week. It's my first.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I don't know where we're gonna go with that.
Jesse. Thank you for reading that, Jesse.
Uh, I think we are about to build and claim.
Are we going to get a chance to like build and claim? I do believe so.
I move to accept bills and claims in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine twenty-three fifty-five. Second.
Would you remove, Teri, second that we accept bills and claims in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents? Any discussion? Andrew, we got the votes.
Yeah.
It's Teri?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Thank you for staying and keeping us company. Appreciate it.
So you know we returned?
Yeah.
Yes.
Eight twenty-five, so I didn't even prepare that. Eight twenty.
I was waiting for the time.
Yeah.